Button has to be up. Nope, that's off. That's on.
It's not on either.
It'll take a minute. Takes a second.
Hi, how's it going? How are you?
Good.
Fairness. Yeah, sometimes I'm just making sure it's firm on the base and it pops up like it's supposed to.
Hello, how are you?
Because I wouldn't expect her to, and they just-
But she was in communication with Sean.
Today? Yeah.
For those of the auditor-
Getting us all caught up on everything.
Wow.
The bank calling.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to a joint meeting today of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, Tulare and the Tulare County Council of Cities. It's good to see so many folks here showing interest in our topics today. If you would, please stand back in this corner over here. We have an American flag. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See them. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here on behalf of the Tulare County Organization and the city's organization. And I don't think I've seen so many suits in one building in a long time.
Yeah, Bob Luke made a killing this week.
Okay, no comment. We do have on our agenda, public comments. If there's anybody that would like to address this body on an item that is not on today's agenda, please step forward, or you can use the mic where you're at and have your name and address for the record. Any public comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, before the public comments, I'd like to call the Porterville City Council meeting to order. We have a majority here. Let the record show that we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there other councils here that have a quorum that need to call theirs to order?
Yeah, Visalia has the majority. Mr. Collins, Mr. Lincoln.
And I'd like to call the Council of Cities. They have all of their members here plus. Call it to order.
Okay. Any other cities that need to call their meetings to order? Seeing none, we will call back to public comments. Are there any interested in making public comments at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment.
And for the record, the meeting is being recorded today since it's a publicly noticed meeting?
Yeah, this is Mayor Gambor, City of Visalia. You know, I just been concerned, you know, I know it's a community problem and I don't know how we're going to handle it, but regarding the homeless on the north side of the banks, you know, off of Ben Matics, you know, I know that, you know, what started out to be just a simple inquiry is probably turning into something that probably none of us want. And I understand there's a, there's a move to maybe, you know, come up with some plans to remove the homeless from the north side of the banks, you know, in the next few weeks. And, you know, I understand, you know, the property, private property rights and all that, but, and I just hope that we collectively, the city and the county, or the county however, but, you know, that we proceed cautiously, that we proceed with a plan and not just go in there and start displacing people without a plan and they're going to wind up somewhere. More than likely, they're going to wind up in the city of Visalia. So, you know, it started out to be just a simple request from the community for water and facilities, you know, and for a trash man, I guess turned out to eviction. And again, you know, I understand property rights both. So I hope that we can come up with a plan that will, that will procedurally and cautiously and methodically, you know, come up with something positive that don't turn into a community uproar. Anyway.
Thank you. And I know over the last two days, there have been meetings with the City of Visalia agencies, county agencies, police, fire, resource management agency to formulate a plan. So that is being addressed as we speak. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move to item number two, the presentation by, I would say by the City of Porterville in regards to firework stands.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Pete McCracken, the mayor of Porterville. We have firework stands within the city and we're, we've worked up an ordinance that controls how many and somewhat of an idea of where they're located. But we're running into a bothersome problem with some firework stands in the county being located right up against the stands within the city. And we're, you know, we understand these firework stands out in the county area, but we'd like to engage in some kind of a dialogue on how we can work together to facilitate both working comfortably. We've had several complaints in the last year or so. They'll be catty corner or right next to one another, just across the boundary line street. I'm not, I don't think we've come up with a proposed solution yet, but we want to discuss it.
We wanted to discuss it because when all this started, we had a gentleman's agreement that they wouldn't place them in the county pockets so closely to where the city populace was. So we need to open the dialogue for that.
Okay. And I, Mr. Link?
That's also the issue with the City of Visalia. And I know part of the Congress we have, we have a timeframe when they can have the booths open. The county ones are open before that. So it gives those people a little head start on selling the fireworks.
And having known this was on the agenda, we had our fire marshal from the county prepare a report that we will share with you folks showing who sets up their fire stands around the outside of the cities. And for the most part, it is the organizations in the cities that are not fortunate enough to be drawn through your lottery system. So in Porterville, we have nine City of Porterville organizations set up stands just outside the city because they don't make your lottery system. Visalia, I believe it's four, Tulare has two. So most of those that are doing that are organizations from within your cities that just don't make the lottery. So I think there needs to be some joint discussion. I agree with you, some joint discussion about how we might address this issue, but understanding that these are, these are not county organizations that are setting up next to the city. They're city organizations that are setting up next to the cities. So I think it does, it does merit further discussion. Mr. McCracken, do you have a suggestion as who we might staff, who we might put together to start discussions for this issue? Maybe our fire staff, our, you know, our city managers, where should we start?
Garcia Brothers.
Our fire chief should definitely be involved and I think we should coordinate through our city manager, John Lawless.
So is this something we might ask the city managers to take up at their next city manager meeting that they hold on a monthly basis?
That didn't bring the county into the-
That we were there at every meeting as well.
Okay.
Our CEO attends those meetings as well.
Probably would be the initial discussion.
Mr. Solomon of the City of Visalia, still preparing the agenda for those meetings? That's a fair thing to do. Great. Any further discussion in regards to the firework stand issue? Seeing none, we will move to our presentation number three, which is a presentation, a joint presentation from County Sheriff's Department and City of Visalia in regards to the consolidated dispatch report and update. See?
We're going to-
And Captain Williams, if you could please pull a microphone, oh, or the cordless. Folks, we do need to use microphones since we're recording this, so when we talk, pull the microphone your way.
Okay, my name's Dave Williams. I'm a captain with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. And we have Veronica McDermott here as well, from the City of Visalia Police Department. And I was going to start out with just kind of an overview, a little bit of a historical perspective on consolidated dispatch within Tulare County. In 2005, the county commissioned GeoCom to do a feasibility study on consolidated dispatch within the county. And when we talk about consolidated dispatch, we're talking about basically that taking all the public safety dispatch centers and combining them all and running it as one, as one dispatch. And currently in Tulare County, we have 10, what we call PSAPS, Public Safety Answering Points, where your 911 calls come into. Obviously, that lends itself to some consolidation, if we can reduce those. In the GeoCom study, there were lots of advantages that were identified. They include the, having the capability of knowing when we have a pursuit and they go between different jurisdictions, to be able to follow those seamlessly in critical incidents, allowing better interoperability between responding units, police, fire, and medical. That having the communications protocol standardized throughout the county would increase efficiencies. It would help recruitment and retention concerns that we have here within the Central Valley, standardizing the policies and procedures used in our communication centers. That would also enhance our ability to put in for grants, a lot of federal and state grants for being, increasing our interoperability capabilities. We could leverage a lot easier if we had a consolidated dispatch. Probably one of the most critical things is the sharing of information. When you have a crime that occurs in one part of the county, getting that information timely to the rest of the agencies is often difficult because you have limited number of dispatchers. They have to make phone calls, they're trying to talk on the radio. And if they're all in the same room, it's a lot easier to share that information and get it out to the unit. So it increases communication and enhances officer safety as well. And those are some of the, some of the efficiencies that we looked at by having a consolidated dispatch when we were kind of starting out. And I will turn it over to Veronica now to finish up.
Thank you, Captain Williams. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
As Captain Williams mentioned, in '05, the county hired a consultant to do a feasibility study. A feasibility study was a very generic study and wasn't a real in-depth implementation study, basically ready to go to begin with the consolidated dispatch. So we revisited this idea back in, actually, September of last year. And several county and city agencies got together to discuss this very issue, and there was quite a bit of interest. And with that, a committee was formed, a subcommittee was formed, and then ultimately, a selection committee for the consultant. And we have 11 cities that, cities and county agencies that have agreed to participate in the study. They're up there, I think everybody has the handout, so that goes along with this PowerPoint presentation. So the 11 cities are Tulare County Sheriff's Department, Visalia PD, Tulare River Indian Reservation, Woodlake PD, Farmersville PD, Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch, the private dispatch company, Tulare County Fire Department, Visalia Fire Department, Tulare County Probation, Woodlake Fire, and Exeter PD. And all 11 agencies agreed. We put together a number for what we thought. We did some research, what would, an implementation study would cost. And with that, we developed a cost-sharing formula and basically, based upon calls for service, we divided those fees up. And to date, all the agencies have paid upfront and are ready to move forward with an implementation study. In June, our committee put together a request for proposal. And some of the scope of the work includes the project initiation and team orientation, interview personnel, also executive staff, and everybody that has an interest in this project, understand current facilities and issues. Basically, they will come in, they will take a look at all the agencies that are interested, look at all technical issues, radio issues, interoperability issues, and evaluate the individual PSAPS and interagency agreements, so on and so forth. Also, review governance options. There are different options. Some of the research our committee did up and down the state, the most popular seems to be joint powers authority. Define a governance vehicle. The consultant, we're going to ask him to, him or her, to define requirements and issues related to the new governance charter, participation, contributions, equity, performance expectations, equitable disengagement amongst other things. The next area is determine co-location alternatives, facility and operational requirements and costs. We want them to determine a document, and document a standalone and co-located requirements, needs building, including facility needs and space requirements, supporting future growth for 911 call-taking, radio dispatch, logging records, computer systems, our CADs, CAD and records management system. The county has ADSIs, City of Visalia has PSSI, so they'll have to evaluate which system would be the most appropriate. Investigate alternative sites, land are existing, available for construction of a new facility. As another option, we would like to ask them to look at a standalone 911 center as an additional option. Initially, we went into this project, we were looking at the City of Visalia's proposed public safety building. Since then, there have been two, one site for sure, and possibly another site. And I believe, and I'll let Chief Sunderland interject later, there may be a third site. So that's what we're going to ask today, is we would like approval to have the consultant look at additional sites in addition to the original public safety building. The beauty of a separate facility is the center, building the center, it could simplify the building and funding logistics, not complicating, you know, public safety center basically will not only cover essential services, but other governmental services. Whereas a standalone 911 center will basically be essential services. So funding for interoperability, grants, federal, state, 911 funds could be a little more promising in that regard. We're also going to ask him to prepare a financial analysis based upon the operational options available, develop and present a final report. And some of the other considerations that our committee thought was important, we'd like the consultant to develop some triggers for future expansion, provide some data storage and retrieval recommendations, report review processes, workflow recommendations, mutual aid agreements. We'd like them to come up with a mutual aid agreement that would be beneficial for all parties involved. We'd like them to make recommendations for integrating public, I'm sorry, private industry with government. This would be the Tulare County Consolidated Dispatch, the private ambulance company. Integration of various public safety agencies, police service practices, and redundancies. And as far as the timeline, this is basically a schedule of what we've done, what, where we are. On July 31st, we, the City of Visalia basically is taking the lead on this project. And we made the RFP available. The entire committee, city and county, put together the scope of work. On August 19th, we held a proposal conference and several individuals from the selection committee were at that in attendance. We had six consultants statewide actually attend. On September 11th, the RFP process closed and we received seven proposals. And the various consultants are listed there, and they're also listed in your handouts. So we had, the majority of them were from California, but we did have some from some other states. On September 25th to October, the selection committee, and basically, selection committee is comprised of Chief Sunderland with county fire, Pat Aldridge with probation, Captain Dave Williams, Tulare County Sheriff, Jay Jones, county IT, Randy Smith, Exeter PD, Danny Riston, Visalia Fire Department, and myself. And what we are currently doing is we are reviewing the seven proposals, and we are going to meet on October the 8th and rate the proposals and then invite the top three for an interview. And based upon the interviews, we will decide on behalf of the committee, which consultant to select. And then hopefully in November, we would like to award the contract, and December, the contract could begin. And it could take about six months roughly for the consultant from beginning to end. And basically, this implementation study will be everything that will need to be considered for a startup facility, brand-new facility from beginning to end. Next step would be for us to hire an architect and start the building. So that's what we have. And actually, we have also, we have several people from our committee here. Chief Sunderland, do you have any comments from the fireside?
That's the point that I was wanting to make. Do I need the microphone?
Yes, sir, please.
Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Department. The point that I was making earlier with Veronica is that in your package, there are two sites listed. We are not limited to two. It's really unlimited at this time. The county has an interest of property, if you will, at Road 140 and Avenue 256, which is a designated site for the Tulare County Fire Department consolidated headquarters, if you will, of the future. I'm sure that in the other cities, there may also be opportunity for site selection and survey. And that's really the point that I wanted to make earlier.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Also, in your, we don't have this on the PowerPoint presentation, but in your handouts, we have the proposed facilities that the City of Visalia is looking at right now. And if you'll see, you'll look on Oak and Bridge, Burke, I'm sorry, is where our proposed public safety building will be. One of the potential sites for a standalone center is just north of that. And then the second potential site is just east of Burke. So those are the proposed sites that we're looking at right now. We'd like authorization to, again, to allow the consultant to also take a look at alternative sites, not just being locked into the one facility. Also, I'm sorry, Chief Nelson, do you have any comments?
Veronica, who are you looking for, you know, approval from to add additional sites for consideration?
We'd like approval from the board and from city council as well.
From this group?
Yeah. We're taking this to our city council on Monday. Pardon? Okay. Okay, from the board today.
Although there might not be all of the specific sites identified, because there may be others, you're just looking for a knot of heads around the table to consider other sites? Because we don't have this listed as any kind of agenda action item. It's listed as a report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I may, under the heading of integration of private industry with government, you talked mainly about ambulance services. Where, is it being recommended to this group again about single provider?
Right, right now, the intention was to provide a report about where we're at today and to bring the whole group up to date as far as the RFP is concerned. I believe there are opportunities for other groups to join along the way. That's what the possible expansion is. So we realize there were some organizations that chose not to participate. Some have updated their equipment as of just recently. And we understand that everyone chose not to participate for their own, to, or not to participate for their own reasons. And so really, this was just to bring an update to the group about where we're at in this process. And we do not have this listed as an action item, Veronica, so I don't know that we can take a vote. But I think from my point of view, and we'll have others chiming if they'd like to, I'd like to see other sites considered as well. Chief Sunderland mentioning the one where the consolidated or the new station, I guess we're going to call it Station One. Station One would be for Tulare County, but I would imagine there are other potential sites as well. So I, I would hope that, you know, even though it's not listed as an action item, that the city, when they do look at that, would consider that. Are there any other comments? Questions?
Just one question, I guess, or maybe to the group. And I realize there's a list of various agencies that are included, but given what's happened in local governments and so forth, I'm thinking there might be other groups that might want to participate in this. Now, is it too late for them to do so? Or could they, could this still happen?
It's not too late, no. And, and just so you know, the, we are communicating with those other cities as well, and keeping them updated as to what we're doing, the entire committee is doing. So. And today is just an FYI. So, as to what the committee's doing, where we are, and what we have accomplished.
Great. Any other questions?
I don't have another question. I got the same question. And it's on the PowerPoint presentation, so somebody put this down. Is the integration of private industry with government have anything to do with single provider ambulances?
Well, what, the reason we put that down is we had a representative from private ambulance, Tulare County Consolidated Dispatch, and she asked that we specifically put that in there, basically so that the consultant can take a look at the private ambulance company that we all, pretty much, they provide services for us, we transfer our calls to private ambulance now, to look at how, what would be the best way to integrate the private ambulance companies with government entities. That's the reason we put that in there.
I like it's raring its head again.
Thank you.
Randy Smith, City of Exeter. I'd like to just chime in on that. The move to single provider is not part of this study. This is strictly for dispatch services. So I'm just trying to clarify your, your question a little bit. You're asking if the, if, if we're moving to a sole provider. No, that's not part of this study. It's just for dispatch services, which currently, all the, all the ambulance providers are being dispatched by TCAD. And they would, they would be the ones coming into this consolidated dispatch.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Veronica, Captain Williams, thank you very much for your presentation and bringing us up to date.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item, number four, is a discussion on the Tulare County General Plan. Like to, Mr. Vandergriff will turn the time. And thank you for those that attended for the dispatch issue. We'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Vandergriff. As, as you're preparing, we, I'd like to ask my staff, Jed Chernobaya, we'd like to give to each of the cities, I'd like to hand five- give to each of the cities, I'd like to hand five copies of a presentation that was made last week by our CIO, Mr. Russo, providing a timeline of the discussion that's taken place over the last quite a while. There's been, I think, some maybe miscommunications that, that there were no communications or meetings being held. And so we want to make sure each of the council members receives a copy of this. So Jed will hand out, give five copies to one representative of each city. If you'd please make sure each city council member receives a copy of this. So, Mr. Vandergrift.
Howard, thank you very much, Chairman. Today, what we'd like to do as a council of cities is lay out the five major concerns that we have with respect to the development of the county general plan. And as we do that, we have five representatives who will address each and every one of those concerns or what we concern, what we consider points of discussion that are of major concern to the council of cities. But before we do that, I'd like to introduce Susie Picasso, who will read our mission statement, because sometimes it's nice to remind ourselves of where we're heading. And this has been our mission statement for, since our inception, although we changed the last part of it to get rid of the acronyms and address timelines. If Councilwoman Picasso could share with us?
Sure, thank you, thank you. Our mission statement is to unite in protecting our communities from crime and promoting orderly planned development in our 20- and 50-year growth boundaries.
And as we, thank you very much, Susie. And as we move through to further introduce ourselves, we are the eight incorporated cities that have united as the council of cities. And we represent 40, 40 elected officials in our county and 67% of the county residents that live within the incorporated areas. What we'd like to start with is, is this council's position on a number of issues. The number one issue is going to be brought to us with, by Terry McKittrick. I always have trouble with that one, I'm sorry. He's formerly the mayor of Dinuba and an all-around good guy.
Oh, thank you, Phil. Gosh. Okay, I'm Dr. Terry McKittrick, former mayor of Dinuba, and now presently, city councilman on the Dinuba City Council. And Dinuba has been a part of the council of cities way back when we started this. And I feel that even though each city has, is unique, and has its own problems and et cetera, we have come together finally, and now we are unified. We've got eight cities who are working together to make the, all the cities and the county really a growing, growing place for everybody to get along, to bring things out, and to help each other. And that's what I think it's all about. We really, finally, are unified. It's taken us a long time. And we have, as Chairman Phil Cox said, we've been working on this for a long time. It was about two years. But I think finally now, we've got a place where we can offer something. And I feel too, what we've got to offer today, Dinuba definitely is behind it 100%, and we hope that it will help the county, you folks, with your general plan. That's, that's what it's all about. And so, with no further ado, my portion of this is city-centered growth model. The future growth to be directed within existing cities, which have the infrastructure, urban services, and development systems in place to accommodate anticipated growth demands. Well, the advantages of this are protects agriculture land, maintains the rural character of the county, and more readily supports regional transit systems. In conclusion, the council of cities' position is that the general plan for the county should provide for no urban development in the city's 50-year growth boundary, the UAB. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Moving on in our presentation, former mayor Ted McCauley of Exeter will address compliance, our, our view of the, what we need to do to comply with AB 32 and SB 375 and all of our general plans.
Thank you again, Ted McCauley, City of Exeter. I would also like to reiterate what Dr. McKittrick said, which is that the, the city of Exeter also stands united with the council of cities. We were also involved from the beginning, and we support both the principles and policies of the council of cities. In regards to the compliance with Assembly Bill 32, two recent pieces of legislation requires cities and counties to address greenhouse gases and take proactive steps to reduce carbon emissions. AB 32, California Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006 establishes a statewide greenhouse gases emissions cap. This legislation establishes a goal to reduce total state greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2010. Each region will receive a greenhouse gas emission cap in each region, and hence, each city and county will need to prepare a carbon reduction plan. The largest producers of carbon emissions are vehicles and electrical use. Hence, there is a heavy emphasis on the following: reduce electrical consumption by requiring, quote, "green" buildings; expand the use of alternative forms of power generating electricity, solar, wind, et cetera; and reduce the use of automobiles and miles traveled. General plans are one of the first steps in establishing sound policies for developing cities and communities to achieve compact, walkable places to live. AB 32 is a benchmark for cities and counties to establish clear policies and implementation programs to reduce carbon emissions. A major goal of reducing automobile usage and miles traveled is developing an appropriate land use pattern.
Thank you very much, former Mayor McCauley. Next on our agenda would be a discussion regarding the compliance with the blueprint principles. And former Mayor Cam Hamilton of Porterville will share those ideas with us.
Thank you, Phil. Board, council cities, city councils. Over the past few years, Tulare County Association of Governments has been working on regional blueprint, efforts to identify goals and objectives for the growth in Tulare County, importance of which would be to tie into overall effort of developing a growth blueprint for the entire San Joaquin Valley. Tulare County's blueprint would cede into the greater effort. Although the implementation of the blueprint process is still evolving, the results of the San Joaquin Valley blueprint efforts to date have been an agreed-upon residential density of 6.8 units per gross acre for new development, along with a list of 12 development policies that would lead to more sustainable development, less dependency on automobile, preservation of important farmlands and other sensitive lands, and a more efficient use of our resources. The 12 blueprint development policies are as follows. One, create a range of housing opportunities and choices. Two, create a walkable neighborhood. Three, encourage community and stakeholder collaboration. Four, foster distinctive and attractive communities with a strong sense of place. Five, make development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. Six, mixed land uses. Seven, preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty, and critical environmental areas. Eight, provide a variety of transportation choices. Nine, strengthen and direct development towards existing communities. Ten, take advantage of compact building design. Eleven, enhance the economic vitality of the region. And finally, number 12 is support actions that encourage environmental resources management. It is the city's position, and that as well as the council cities, that the goals and policies of the draft general plan do not demonstrate furtherance of all blueprint principles. Coming from a city that just recently went through general plan update and has been adopted, and not only was not contested, but we are award-winning for our general plan from the San Joaquin Valley blueprint, we believe that we can speak to this issue quite well. We also want the Board of Supes to understand that Porterville is also in total unity with the council of cities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, former mayor Cam Hamilton. And moving on to another former mayor, Greg Collins from Visalia, who will discuss our, our vision of the 20-50-year growth models.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil, and members of the board. I think I've been around the longest, so I'm going to provide a little bit of historical perspective. Since the 1970s, the county of Tulare and its eight incorporated cities have operated under a pact that wherein the cities, within the cities' UAB and UDB, now called the 20-year and 50-year growth lines, the cities and its, and its residents, to a great extent, would, would control the planning and development within these boundary lines. This has proved very beneficial over the last 30 or 40 years in that it has discouraged urban sprawl, it has preserved agricultural land, it has minimized land use conflicts, and maybe most importantly, ensured that development was properly served with infrastructure and services. Today, this pact is under debate and discussion, obviously, serious debate and discussion. Within these boundary lines of the eight cities, the cities have experienced the development of ranch sets, commercial and industrial development, and ag-related uses, many of which were inconsistent with the long-term plans and desires of the community. This makes for a future that is difficult to plan for. In addition to the benefits that I previously mentioned, have began to lose their luster as a result of these recent development activities. There are solutions, however. The land between the 20-year and 50-year growth boundary lines could be rezoned to a type of agricultural zone that would preclude commercial development, ranchettes, and industrial development, thereby preserving ag land and avoiding or minimizing land use conflicts. And what will be discussed a little later is that the cities and the county begin to work on some kind of revenue sharing agreement that would be detailed in the MOU. I believe that failure to resolve this most important issue would be tragic, and I think the public looks to its local decision-makers to try to get these decisions regarding planning and resource management right. In concluding, in conclusion, I found this very old book that I think I had on my bookshelf when I was working for the county in the 70s. It's, it's about the state of California, land of contrast, and it talks about the 58 counties. And there's an interesting excerpt that I'd like to read. It says, "In contrast to most counties, city-county relationships, city-county relationships are good, and definite spheres of influence have been created. There is a determined attempt to prevent sprawl and destruction of valuable agricultural land. This is a near rarity in the Central Valley and the nation." That was written in 1975, and I would hope that together, we could get back to those days where we have cooperation and work on goals that are common to all of us. And to reiterate what has been said, the city of Visalia has been long a member of the council of cities, and we have two other council members here in attendance.
Before we move on, I need to ask you a question. What was the first year you were elected?
1975.
Same as me. What about you, Bob? Bob's the oldest.
2000.
Oh, oh, oh.
He looks good.
He's still the oldest.
We'll move on to the future mayor of Farmersville. I don't know if you've been a past mayor yet, but I would suspect you will be a future mayor. And this will be Paul Boyer from the city of Farmersville, who will discuss the council's view on revenue sharing and development impact fees in respect to the new Tulare County General Plan.
I'll be doing the revenue sharing.
Okay, then that means...
...effort here.
Mr. Benavides will be doing...
Current mayor.
The current mayor. Let me acknowledge you, current mayor, Benavides.
The council of cities recognizes that the county has a desire to share revenue with the cities. The counties had offered to modify its general plan policies to favor city-centered growth in exchange for sharing city revenues, generating the areas between their expanded 20-year growth boundaries, or sphere of influence, SOIs, and their current SOI. Specifically, the revenue identified, where sales tax and transient occupancy tax, every member of the city, the council of cities, has agreed to negotiate revenue sharing on behalf of their respective cities. I think the city of Farmersville has also been part of this council since the day it was made, and we're kind of happy to be here.
Thank you very much, Mayor Benavides. Paul Boyer.
I'm the lucky one that gets to read the fine print, so. Collection, and a favorite topic, developer impact fees. Okay, the council of cities recognizes and expects that the county should develop and adopt a system of development impact fees that appropriately recover the cost of growth-related capital improvements for new development. This position has been adopted by each city council as well. The cities understand that in order for this system to be put in place, there needs to be a detailed nexus study developed that justifies the amount of fee that will be applicable to each urban area in the county. The cities also recognize that the county needs to have each city collect this fee at the issuance of building permits within their jurisdiction, and that to do this, each city must, in turn, adopt the county's impact fees. All cities have agreed to do this. In turn, the cities want the county to collect adopted city impact fees that would be applicable to county-approved development activity that would occur in their 50-year growth boundaries, the UAB. This would require the county to adopt the applicable city's impact fees. The county prepared an impact fee study in the fall of 2008 that covered jails, courts, parks, and administrative facilities. To date, the study on the transportation impact fees has not been completed. The city's staff members have for some time been prepared to work with county staff to review and gain an understanding of these studies with the intent of recommending their adoption by the county and each city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyer. And moving on, last but not least, not an elected official, an attorney from the city of Visalia who is acting, let's see, acting as the legal counsel for the council of cities, Alex Pelzer, would like to review the memorandum of understanding and recommendations to the general plan policies as seen through the eyes of the council of cities.
Thank you, Mr. Vandergrift. Alex Pelzer, city attorney for the city of Visalia, and I've been asked by the city to work with the council of cities on this issue. And from, for some time, we have been discussing, and at least since May, we've been discussing with the county, the need to have some form of MOU to set forth the concepts that you just heard discussed here. This would be an interim kind of an agreement that would set forth how we go down the road toward further agreement on these issues. The purpose is to state how the parties would establish principles for regional planning, cooperative revenue sharing, and development impact fee recovery. Whether it has been clear in the past or not, it's clear now what the cities are seeking in county MOU. And I've put four points together on that to make it clear. First is an understanding regarding no urban development in the 50-year UAB planning area of each city until annexation. Commitment to process for negotiating increased share of revenues and expanded 20-year boundary. A commitment to a dual process for establishing development impact fees, which means dual means county impact fees collected on behalf of the cities, as well as city impact fees collected on behalf of the county. An interim understanding regarding the county development in the meantime and city annexations in the meantime. Why is this important to the cities? An MOU has been identified as the preferred way of moving forward because the process of adopting all of this that we've been discussing is, is a legally complex process. The general plan update by itself requires multiple public hearings, coordination with an EIR, potential legal challenges from not just the cities, but from the entire public, and compliance with state law while preserving this board's decision-making discretion in the process. There are follow-on measures that a general plan, even an updated, well-drafted general plan, will require some follow-on measures, and those measures are of supreme importance to the council of cities. The general plan is only a broad outline. If it identifies conforming ordinance changes that need to be made, those need to be processed. Translating the concepts to specifics in an MOU, if, even if the city and county can agree to fundamental concepts at a meeting such as this or any other, it does involve complex planning concepts that requires ongoing collaboration beyond just sign... planning concepts that requires ongoing collaboration beyond just signing the MOU, and you must be able to adapt to the changing nature of a plan that results from the public review process that I've just discussed. The city and county adopted reciprocal development impact fees, require multiple public hearings, development of complex engineering studies, and agreements between the agencies. So we can agree to do them, but we can't just do them overnight. How can an MOU address these issues? In an MOU, the parties can commit to a specific process with specific goals and objectives and specific standards. They can identify the processes the parties agree to pursue. No party would be committed until mutually accepted pieces are assembled. We understand that's important to the county, it's also important to the cities. Mutual adoption of the mutually acceptable pieces are to be cross-conditional. They wouldn't go into effect unless all of these pieces come together. Other objectives of the MOU is to provide for an interim working relationship. There are currently development proposals. Whether you think of this as a downtime or not, there are current development proposals within cities, within areas that the cities would like to annex, and within county areas. And an interim agreement regarding the application of future adopted revenue measures could be provided for in an MOU. The Council of Cities has provided a draft MOU. They provided it in May, and at the encouragement of the Board of Supervisors, we accompanied it with an enumeration of specific general plan policies that the cities were seeking. We understand that county was interested in getting to specifics soon, so we provided that in May, which we have copies of here, that have specific general plan policies that we thought ought to be included in your general plan update before the last administrative draft came out. The county responded in late July with a different MOU with none of those provisions that the cities were seeking. The cities provided a more detailed enumeration of the general plan goals that were included with the MOU that was first provided, and objectives in form of a comment letter on the county's administrative draft of the new general plan update in late August, and I have that here as well. That is a many-page letter with very detailed comments about what we would be seeking to be changed in the draft general plan that was circulating about that time. The county shortly thereafter presented a matrix on September 1 during a county Board of Supervisors meeting that states the county's, in essence, refusal to consider the majority of the cities' requests as it pertains to the 50-year boundary area, the UAB, and disclosed some fundamental differences with what the cities were seeking as it applies to the 20-year And most recently now, we have received yesterday, I believe maybe it was Tuesday night, but most of us got it Wednesday morning, a second version of a county-proposed MOU that, in essence, reiterates the county's refusal to consider the majority of the cities' requests in the UAB, the 50-year boundary, and restates the matrix's differences with the cities in the 20-year boundary. Some of the provisions that the cities were proposing were acceptable in that matrix, but it's my opinion that there are still fundamental differences even in the UDB areas. The MOU delivered by the county does not provide for interim measures. So in closing, the cities remain committed to an MOU that accomplishes the four goals that we had set out. To date, we don't believe we've reached that agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pelzer. That concludes our formal presentation of the position of the Council of the Cities. Is there any other member of the Council of Cities that would like to address the body here today? I would like to acknowledge Mr. Martinez, the City of Woodlake.
They save the best for last. Good afternoon, sirs. I am a council member for the City of Woodlake and a member of the Council of Cities. First of all, thank you for allowing the Council of Cities the opportunity to state our concerns on the important impending subject of the county general plan. I am here today to express to you gentlemen that we, the Council of Cities, wish to help you folks in accomplishing your general plan. There are concerns on both sides about revenue sharing and impact fees relating to the 20- and 50-year boundaries, and the other points of discussion that were mentioned by the other group members, the city-centered growth model, compliance with AB 32 and SB 375/the blueprint principles, and memorandum of understanding/recommendation on general plan policies. United as one voice, we hope to work forward with you folks to the fullest completion of your general plan. We are eight cities before you today and who are willing to work out every detail of the county's general plan to the best interest of both the Council of Cities and the county supervisors. Though our cities are unique in our needs, we always stand united in our efforts to serve the needs of our citizens. Remember, those constituents who voted us into office also voted you into your offices, and they expect us to work together for the benefit of their cities and their county. Thank you.
I want to thank our Council of City participants for participating. I want everybody to know that all eight cities are participating as a united Council of Cities, and we want you to know that we want to keep the eye on the prize, and that's a general plan that will serve every citizen of this county so that they have a better quality of life, and we have a good working relationship between all levels of government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pelzer, can I ask you just a couple of quick questions? And it's throughout the document, on your four points, start at number one, it says "no urban development" without much description beyond that. Are those the details that you're... Some of the details you're discussing need to be worked out because it says "no urban development." You know, some of us might consider a packing house not to be an urban development, but appropriately zoned for agricultural property.
Well, this is a PowerPoint-type presentation. I tried to be as blunt as we could, so, you know, there's a finer point, but I do believe that part of that needs to be worked out. Part of it has been expressed, though, in our various comments. Concept is stated in a number of ways, that the UAB/UDB 20-50-year boundary is considered by the cities and has been for decades to be a holding area. Traditionally, that's been furthered, implemented by county zoning as agriculture. That has worked fairly well over the years, but in recent years, the agriculture zone has not worked as well. It's been susceptible to rezoning applications for either as ranchettes or straight-out industrial, commercial, residential uses. Or the zoning is kept on, and the expansive use of list of uses that are provided under the county agricultural zone begin to look an awful lot like industrial uses to cities. And the problem with that is, you know, it may be a problem with that county-wide, but all we're talking about is in the UAB 50-year boundaries, that presents either leapfrog or inconsistent development model when it's placed in a 50-year growth boundary around a city. So I think the answer is, yes, we think that something needs to be changed in terms of the agricultural zone. It needs to be more of an exclusive agricultural zone, and some work may be on where that line is drawn to get to the finer point, but if it looks industrial, it ought to be industrial and not permitted in an agricultural zone. And if it's within a city's sphere, the 50-year boundary, it shouldn't be pursued.
One of our recommendations is let LAFCO be the deciding agency as we start looking at these lines. In some cases, our lines don't match up with your lines. In some cases, the SOI lines up with a UDB or UAB or neither. Has the Council of Cities discussed having LAFCO set those lines?
Yes, and we think that something needs to get resolved. I think the issue, the real issue, is, yes, SOIs and UDBs probably need to be coterminous, and some process for getting there needs to be arrived at. But more importantly, the county, whatever development standards or restrictions are applied, the county's definition of a UDB is yet a third line, and that needs to be made coterminous as well.
I think we're all in agreement.
What Mr. Van der Grift was touching on was the fact that it doesn't help us anymore to refer to UDBs and UABs. Under the blueprint and other concepts, they are now viewed as 20-year planning rings and 50-year planning rings.
And I think we're pretty much all in agreement on that issue as far as the lines and, you know, and letting LAFCO look at that. My next question would be on your second bullet point, and it's throughout your PowerPoint presentation, it mentions expanded 20-year boundaries. And if you look at the blueprint and the new state laws coming into place, my question is, why is the word "expanded" in there when in a lot of cases, it might shrink? The 20-year boundary might be smaller than what it currently is.
Well, presumably, in 20 years, you'll need to have a... You'll have grown into your 20-year planning boundary, and then you'll need to apply to change that boundary to further out. And so, as it is supposed to happen, the 20-year boundary does need to change from time to time. And the discussions with the county have been the increased sales tax agreement, the increased share of sales tax, and the new agreement to have a share of transient occupancy tax would apply in those areas when expanded. That's the reference there.
And the last PowerPoint, or point is just a clarification. You talk about development, you're talking about development standards. Is that correct? The way things would be built, the width of the streets, providing for traffic corridors? Is that what...
I think that may point out a kind of a fundamental misunderstanding that is reflected in the county's, at least to the extent that I've been able to review it in the last day. The MOU that was prepared and delivered yesterday made several references to, within the UDB and certainly within the UAB, if development did occur in county areas, the commitment from the county, the give that the county was giving, was that it will be done according to city standards and according to a county-adopted city general plan for which the cities would pay fees to keep up to date. And I think that discloses a fundamental difference because there is no provision in the county general plan for a city's general plan. I think what is being expressed is that the county would like to create a general plan for each city that should mirror the general plan of the cities, and if they do development consistent with that general plan, it would be acceptable to the cities. So it's not annexed, and it's simply developed but according to the standards of the city's own general plan. And I need to make clear that that is not acceptable to the cities. The cities do not believe that they are planning for county growth, they are planning for city growth. And so the initial position, you know, the overall fundamental position is that growth shouldn't occur in the county, in the UAB 50-year boundary, that if growth is going to occur, it should occur through annexation and administration by the cities. We've often talked about if it does occur in the county, and we have been presenting that from a perspective of there may be currently zoned, currently entitled, currently vested property rights, that if you were to apply a different zone, you may not be able to apply that new zone too, and you're going to have to process some kind of development application. That's when we would insist on city standards being met. But to answer the cities' concerns about leapfrog development in the county when it should be in the city, by answering that it'll be done to city standards doesn't answer our concerns.
Mr. Van der Grift, you would allow, if we can break in about two minutes here? I asked, I did ask our staff to prepare a report on development that has occurred within the city's UDBs over the last five years. Mr. Raper, where'd you go?
I'm hiding behind trees.
He's hiding. That's become a...
Cox, I think we've gone to the last page of our comments, page 19, which is discussion and comments, so I'm sure that it's open for discussion and comments.
Jake Raper.
You're on.
Jake Raper, RMA Director, Tulare County. As Supervisor, or Chairman Cox, did mention, they wanted a report as to the extent of development within the UABs and UDBs within all the communities in Tulare County. And since 2004 through the present, rezonings within the UABs have been five, and one within the UDB. General plan amendments, three within the UAB. Tentative maps, three within the UABs, and one within the UDB. Special use permits, 20 within the UABs and 20 within the UDBs. Parcel maps within the UABs are nine, and within the UDBs, three. So as you can see, over the past five years, the amount, quote, of urban development has been very, very, very small. Now, from my observation and discussing with issues with respective city staffs, it seems like to me a lot of historical issues are brought forward in our discussions. Bad planning occurred a long time ago in the county. The current Board of Supervisors and staff recognize that that bad planning did occur. We've permitted certain developments to occur, but on the watch of this current Board of Supervisors, and in the last five years, that type of development approval has not occurred. Very little has occurred within your UABs and UDBs. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to respond.
Mr. Chairman, if I can maybe comment on that? And in my other life, I served as a planning consultant for three of the cities and have been doing so for about 25 years. And there are some subtleties out there. One of the things that is existing is that we have some old agricultural zones that exist within our UABs, specifically the A1 Zone and the AE Zone. And even within the AE 20 Zone, in the land division sections, there are numerous opportunities and loopholes to divide that land into essentially ranchettes, even though the purpose and objective is to maintain it in large-lot agriculture. And we have that continually happening, and I've sent letters on behalf of those three cities indicating that as these communities grow out and bump into these ranchettes, we just have to stop because there's no way we can integrate that into the urban fabric of whether it's an Exeter, Woodlake, or Farmersville. In addition to that, there are enclaves of RA zoning, which create half-acre ranchettes, one-acre ranchettes. So that's a subtlety out there. It happens every year. When home values were up, it was a quicker pace. Obviously, it's slowed down significantly. But that particular dilemma, more than anything else, really precludes a community from growing into those particular areas because once you bump into a one-acre ranchette with a well and a septic tank and a house right in the middle, you essentially give up. And as a city, you have to pick another direction, albeit it might not be the best direction in terms of urban growth. So that is something that I'm hoping out of this process, maybe we go back and reevaluate the AE 20 Zone to preclude some of this land division activity that does pose problems, maybe not today, but in the future. And probably the best example is the West Exeter, your West Exeter-specific plan and our West Exeter-specific plan bumping into each other. And once they bump... And once they bump into each other, everything ceases, because they're just not compatible. Thank you.
Any other comments?
You know, that's, I understand the, that part of it, but I, that does not address permits that are issued for continued growth in our UDBs. For instance, the Saults Track in Tulare, we are now starting to get calls where people have single-family houses on half-acre to two-acre parcels, wanting to know what they can do to stop the county from issuing permits for mobile homes that are being put in backyards in the Saults Track. And we're eventually going to have to annex that, that track, because now they're asking us to, and they do butt up to our city limits. And that's just one, one example. And it's been the most recent and most active in the last two weeks in our community, and going out there and looking. And you look at that, and we say, once we annex that, annexing it with just single-family houses would be one thing, but it doesn't have all the curb and gutter, and it probably hasn't had a chip seal ever, and maybe it had a little oil if somebody's transmission spilled as they were driving down the road. But needless to say, we're going to have to annex it, and so far, it's coming out about 200,000 an acre for every time we annex a piece of county-developed piece of property. And granted, not on your watch. This is, this is 50-year-old, or maybe 55-year-old stuff. That's why we're concerned about the 50-year growth plan. And, and, because 50 years, 50 years ago, nobody thought it would be in the city, in the city urban development boundary, or looking to annex. And now, with the new RA Zone that we have, that I heard we have a new policy on now, I can see ranchettes becoming home business operations with 50% of their landmass being turned into warehousing, according to what I heard at the last supervisor meeting, a week ago, I mean. And we're concerned with those kind of things, because we inherit them. We inherited the Sissy, we call them the Sissy Streets, or the Sister Streets, Lois, Gail, Lynn, there's another one out there. And just those four streets that we annex, we're so far, just to bring it to minimum standard, cost to taxpayers who didn't have any say in the approval process, now that we had to annex it under the Knox Law, Knox Bill, it's so far, the bill is running somewhere about $4.3 million, and we're not even done yet. And I think there's, we're all experiencing that. We just don't want to have that kind of, we don't want to inherit those kind of bills down the road. And that's probably why we want some, some definitely have some say in the UDB and the UAB, or the 20-year and the 50-year plan, because 50-year-old stuff is coming, coming in. We're still faced over there by the College of the Sequoias. We have Road 130 and 132, and I certainly hope that that's not going to be a condition, that we have to annex that, to annex the college, because that's going to be another multimillion-dollar repair job if we are forced to annex that.
We appreciate that very much.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Mr. Raper's comments, and I appreciate, I'm sorry.
Something that the county did put in place about three and a half years ago, are, we do have, when we have subdivisions come in, they are required now to provide through a home, like a homeowner's assessment district, to keep their streets maintained. So we know that's been an issue in a lot of the subdivisions that were created 50, 60, 80 years ago. So the county has started to address those issues, starting about three and a half years ago.
But I like, like Mr. Collins, I've been in and out of this, this position since 1975, too. And that 30 years goes pretty fast, and we started off, when I was there, at 17,000. We're 56,000 people now. And planning for 30 years is something we should have done back then, but we were only planning for 20. And then, I don't see where a 50-year growth, planning consideration is, is all that, is too far out of the realm.
For Hamilton, sorry to cut you off.
Not at all, not at all. I appreciate that you brought up that it hadn't happened under your watch, and that's to be commendable. However, what we need is written policy that assures us that it won't happen. All of us are going to be off our elected positions sooner or later. People are going to replace us. We want written policy that assures us that this type of development will meet city standards.
Yes.
Just a comment. Just a comment about this, this issue. Am I on?
You're on.
If you go back 40, 50 years ago, we did not have a Rural Valley Lands Plan. We did not have Williamson Act contracts. And so, there seems to be this concept that if we don't adopt the city's position, that there's no written guarantees within the general plan to protect you in the future. I would submit to you that if we had had a Rural Valley Lands Plan, most of the problems you're talking about would not exist today, when those were developed, because it did not exist. And in this plan, it does continue to exist. So Rural Valley Lands Plan still acts as an absolute bar to the development. I recall a situation in, up in my district, where a school, private school acquired farm property for purposes of wanting to expand their, their school operations. There was absolutely no way around the Rural Valley Lands Plan that they could develop that property. And so, it remains in productive agricultural condition, and it will in perpetuity, as long as the Rural Valley Lands Plan is in place. My difficulty is, we have always had, we have had UDB and UAB, but it did not have a timeframe. The 50-year concept is something new. It was supposed to be an ultimate out, grow-out period, or distance for the, for the cities, and no one really knew what that was. It was an arbitrary line drawn. I submit the problem, 50 years is still arbitrary. Who knows what 50 years is? It's very difficult to know what a 20-year line is. I think many cities have annexed property into their city limits today, that based upon the new requirements of density and the vagaries of the economy, they may live within their existing city limits for the next 20 years now. And so, the problem I have is not so much county versus city, as it is cities versus property owners, property rights. Many of the things you've talked about, as far as being problem, again, we're not, not only not on our watch, they weren't on the watch of several generations of supervisors before us, because we're talking about things that occurred many, many, many years ago. The fact of the matter is, they exist. They may be industrial sites, they may be commercial sites, they may be, whatever they are, they're out there. And to, to say to those people that the cities, as far as we can see, we're going to, we're going to limit what you could do with your property, I have a real concern about industrial sites, for instance, if a person needs to expand, because under the concept that the cities have proposed, there would be no further expansion allowed in the UAB. Well, what does that mean? If a person can't expand, and they can't exist within their existing space, they leave, we're left with a brown field? I mean, there's, there's a lot of concern I have about that 50-year boundary is, is an arbitrary boundary. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good idea, it's that nobody knows where that 50-year boundary is. So that's one of the struggles, the struggles I have is, I, we've, you know, in the past, we've used the UAB as more of a consulting area, so that when we, when it was a proposed project or something in that area, that we would consult with the cities. The cities are asking for more of a mandatory ability to basically stop anything by putting that in the plan. The idea of expansion, I mean, again, we've got a lot of things out there that, you know, we refer to them as being non-conforming uses. But in the old days, where we didn't have the ability to utilize GIS, we just took a big green brush and sort of painted everything over green. The entire community of Sultana is agriculturally zoned, for instance. But obviously, it's not agriculture, it hasn't been for 100 and some years. So that's my concern, is that, that I think there's an overreaching here on the part. The county's not looking for development in its, what you're, what we're calling this 50-year period, or 50-year boundary. We're not looking, we're not going to be building subdivisions. We could, it would be internally inconsistent to even try to do that with a Rural Valley Lands Plan. But at the same time, we have to protect the property rights of the people who are out there, who have what they have. If it's two acres, or it's one acre, or it's four acres, it's an industrial site, or it's a commercial site, I drive them down my streets in my district, there's all kinds of commercial properties out in the, in the country. And they would probably be within your 50-year UABs. So that's my concern, is that there seems to be a little overreaching. We have somehow got to protect the property rights of people who are out there, but it's not the intent of the county to go out there and do development. I mean, if, if that's the concern of cities, I think it's protected by other means, especially through the Rural Valley Lands Plan.
Any other, any other comments?
Well, likewise, it's like, it's really not fair to citizens inside of city limits to have, actually be forced through the Knox Bill. You can say that it wasn't forced, but it was, to have to pick up a $4.3 million fix-it, repair bill, because it had, we had to annex the island in order to annex other future opportunity for our community. And I would, not, not to be badgering or anything, but I think I saw a large, large, one-acre parcel subdivision approved somewhere out there north of Tagus Ranch, Dr. Malley's property, and that happened just.
Twenty-acre parcels.
Twenty?
There were 20-acre parcels.
They were broken down into smaller 20-acre parcels.
It took 80s into 20s.
And that, that wasn't a sub, that's not, that's not a subdivision?
No, that was a family deal. That was to separate the land out for future families when he passes away, so that everybody would be equally taken care of.
It's what you're calling ranchettes. It's what you're calling ranchettes.
But they're 20-acre parcels.
But they're 20-acre parcels in a zone that was 80. Okay, it was 40. But the point is, that the city of Isalia, it was within the city's UAB, the city commented, objected, and the county approved it anyway. And what that does, when you break it down into 20s from 80s, is, multiplies the number of ranchettes that could be built there, and makes it much more difficult to handle them in future development times. I think the, the number of development entitlements that were just read off, I mean, you might look at that as a low number. I look at that as a very high number, when it's all within either UAB or UDB. I mean, if, if it's true that you think the Rural Valley Lands Plan prevents that kind of thing, how did it not prevent it? And if it does prevent it, then why is it inconsistent to put it in the, the general plan?
Devil might be in the details there.
Well, and I don't think anybody has said that we want to have rezoning of current uses and cause uses to be, you know, all of a sudden illegal. I don't, and nobody has suggested that.
The devil's in the details. The majority of those were for the second house that's allowable by our current ordinances.
I guess we could also point out a, a development north of the city of Isalia, that it was not, you know, it was a residential development on the other side of the river that was approved over the objections of the city.
Well, but that's a good example, because again, that was only in compliance with the zoning that was on that property. That was pre-existent, had been there for many, many years. In fact, the applicant in that case wanted to actually have more dense development, and the city said, no, we're going to hold you to this, to development standards that it was adopted, which was two-acre parcels. And so, that's how, that's how the development went forward. But there was no proposal, and this plan never has been, nor have I heard any comments from any of the cities that wanted to downzone properties. So what you're referring to there would be taking property that was zoned two-acre parcels and downzoned to something else. That was never part of this proposal to do, to do that in general plan. Is that what the cities are now suggesting?
No.
Well, then that's not a good example you've just given us, because that was a pre-existing condition, that would, had been like that for many, many years. And the comments that were made by the city had to do with this very issue, where the developer wanted to, to actually do more dense development into one-acre parcels, and the city said, held his feet to the fire, and said, no, you have to comply with existing rules, with existing, the way it was adopted in that, that particular property, which are two-acre parcels. So in this, and that's an example then of, of an application that you may use as a weapon against us, the county, but in fact, it was to be a better urbanized use of that property. And, and again, we're not, there was never any plan in this general plan to downzone our properties. What is there, was there. There was no intent to try to take, I, I, I don't think any of us think, like the idea of creating these little ranchettes, but the ranchettes were created years and years ago, not by us.
I think we just heard some that have been created since, that, that there have been rezones and things within UDBs and UABs that we just talked about. So those are the things that we're concerned about continuing. As we read the general plan as it's currently drafted, it would encourage those kinds of things.
20-acre parcels are not subdivisions. And in the past, what we're really dealing with, what you're talking about, Mr. Vandergriff, in terms of difficulties and expenses, were little subdivisions that were built on the edges of cities. And in some years past, in Porterville, there was competition between the city and the county to build subdivisions side by side. We're not talking about anything like that in the last probably 20 or 30 years.
I think your mic's off, Ted. If, the button needs to be up.
Okay. What you're saying is, it just went from a 40-acre parcel out there to, to a 20-acre, or now to, originally, it was an 80-acre, and now it went to, I guess it was, what we're talking about is a 40-acre.
It was zoned, it was zoned 40, I think it was 80-acre parcel that was zoned on the 40.
Okay, so.
80's at 40.
What we're saying is, that over time, that's going to go from a 40-acre parcel to, we're all gone, now it's going to go to a 20-acre, then it's going to become four-fives, and then it's going to become ranchettes. Because over time, nobody's going to be keeping track, there's nothing in there that's going to stop that from continuing to happen. That's what's happened in the past.
Can't go any shorter, that you can't go any lower than an AE 20.
One of the comments, Steve, regarding your comment about 20-year or 50-year, I think the reason why we feel the 50-year is making sense is because of the California blueprint, and they're saying 50 years, and you under, you know as well as anybody, what the state determines are going to do if they set up a policy that you have got to, to meet their standards. And I believe that's what we're looking at, is one of the concerns we have is if you put small units on a big lot, we're not going to be able to meet the blueprint that the state says we require to do. And it may be like what happens in TK, if you don't meet, there are certain regulations, you don't get your funding for parole. So I, that's why we went to the 20 and the 50 years, we felt it made sense to be at least consistent if the state comes back and say, yes, we are doing something within the 50 years. So that gives you the reason why we booked that schedule.
Well, and I don't, I appreciate that. I just was, had a little conflict with the concept that, that we had, historically, we were talking about a 50-year line. We have never really used that terminology, a 50-year line, in the past. But, and there again, going to the idea of the blueprint, I think we're all in agreement, going forward, those are the standards. What we're living with right now are things that were done in the past. But they are, they are what they are, they're out there. And, and we have to acknowledge the fact that they're out there. So if somebody's got a one-acre parcel out there, they haven't built a house on it, but it's zoned one acre, and they want to build a house on it, they're going to be able to do that. Now, that's inconsistent with the blueprint, but it's not something of our creation, it's of the, it's a historic fact.
We can sit here and debate past and present, you know, which, you know, that's fine, you know, a little historical perspective helps in trying to get somewhere. But, but I think what you hear, but what you hear the council of cities saying is that, you know, we, we agree with revenue sharing, you know, we agree with the collection of, you know, the impact fees, and how we reciprocate, and you collect, we collect, and we divvy out. I think, but what we're saying is, we'd like to have that spelled out a little bit, you know, rather than try to.
Rather than try to, you know, rather than try to say, you know what, commit to a percent, you know, it's kind of the, the cart before the, cart before the horse, you know, what we're saying is that, we want to work with you on a percent, but let's outline the details in the MOU. You know, and I, I think that's a fair, that's a fair request, you know, how can we get into something, you know, and we don't know, we gotta work, we kind of, we gotta build to something, not, not, not commit and then build backward, because then there's less, there's less, you know, reciprocity. So I think that the, the cities agree with, you know, with revenue sharing and collection of fees, it's just that we, you know, we'd like to have it, see it spelled out a little bit more. That's all we're saying.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one question, and that question is of county staff, so Mr. Raper or Dave, you can answer this question. I just, one of the points that was, was brought out in the, in the beginning of this presentation was the question as to whether or not this general plan was a city-centered growth general plan? And I just want to ask for, just to reflect on the record, on behalf of the staff who's creating this plan currently, is the general plan, as it is being written, considered a city-centered growth general plan?
Jake, you want to answer that? Jake Raper, RMA Director, the answer is yes, definitely. As part of our research, in the 20, in the future growth of Tulare County, approximately 85% of the growth will occur within incorporated communities. The balance of the growth will incur, occur in our unincorporated communities and the balance of the county. balance of the county.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you said the, the eighty-five percent will occur in the unincorporated?
No, in the incorporated.
Well, I think you said unincorporated, but-
Been incorporated on all the infrastructure.
Well, if, if it's, in the unincorporated, certainly it's not going to be a city-centered growth, so. But it is going to be a city-centered growth, the way it's laid out and the framework is there.
Well, I, all of the eight cities here, the only cities in Tulare County who have planners who've looked at this, believe it's not city-centered growth. So do you, you're, you're suggesting that there's a study that is going to quantify this?
Yes.
And where, what kind of study is that?
It's in our EIR.
I asked two quick real questions, probably again of our staff. On page thirteen of your PowerPoint, you talk about the NEXUS studies. It's my understanding that the NEXUS studies were completed, that the transportation study was completed, and in fact, handed over to the cities. Am I not correct in my-
Not correct.
So the transportation study is not, that's not complete yet? Was the other NEXUS studies in regards to the other impact fees completed?
Yes.
So the, so the one study that we're still not completed on is the transportation study then?
Yes.
Okay.
Still using the September 2008 study as the NEXUS study?
Heard someone say October, October '08.
October.
That was for the balance of the, of the impact fees. Well, folks, I'd like to get off this log I'm sitting on.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question? Because there's an eight hundred pound gorilla in the room, and nobody's asked a question. I, I'd like to get an expression from, from board members, what, what they deem regionally significant, because that is, is in your general plan. We've discussed it, we don't quite know what that means. So I'd, I'd like to hear about it firsthand.
Hey, Jake, you and Dave are going to handle that one.
Yeah, Dave?
Dave?
Now, we did, we did provide a, what we feel is appropriate for regional significant. But Dave, would you please read the definition that we believe is appropriate?
If you could, read that into a microphone, Dave, because we're, we're trying to record this. You're not on.
Dave Bryant, Division Manager for Special Projects, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. I'm reading from the Goals and Policies Report, Chapter Two, under Planning Framework, Part One, Page two dash seven. This is under Policy PF 1.2, which delineates the location of urban development. Under 1A, Roman numeral three, the proposal for urban development qualifies as a regionally significant proposal, which means that the proposal must demonstrate, demonstrate special significance to Tulare County based on consideration of the following factors. The proposed land uses will be consistent with innovative land use planning and design principles in addition to those in this plan. Any significant habitat or agricultural resources will be addressed through onsite preservation or through the acquisition of off-site resources and/or fees in lieu thereof. Substantial financial benefits will be conferred on countywide operations or any other relevant factor considered on a case-by-case basis. In addition to that, the, the county finds that public service impacts of the development are within the service capabilities of the county and official, and affected special districts, including but not limited to the representation of sufficient water supply.
Is that specific to Yoko Valley by any chance?
Nope. Nope. And I think it's interesting, you know, when you look at Tulare County, we have a very interesting situation of being, having a lot of bookend cities. Kingsburg immediately to our north, Delano to the south, who's in Kings County over there? Corcoran in Kings County. And we have had some serious inquiries and some, some development around Delano. We have a mutual agreement with Delano, but, but there would be examples of regionally significant projects which might occur that are adjacent to those communities, but they're outside of the city limits because they're in the county of Tulare. So I think, again, it's the idea of, of having some flexibility into the future. It's difficult to have the ability to perceive into the future exactly what we'd be, would be talking about, so you want to have some, some guidelines, but you don't want to have it, you know, it's not just an open door. But looking for, you know, if something came along, an opportunity was there to develop something that would be beneficial not just to Tulare County, but also to its cities that in a location where, where it would make sense, we, you know, providing that kind of flexibility.
If I, if I can jump in real quick through, when we started the process of meeting council of cities and county with Supervisor Worthy and myself, it became very clear that it behooves the county to let the development occur inside of the cities, because the county actually does not have to provide several services to that project and benefits greatly through the, the property tax of that project. So it, it's confusing sometimes to me to, I, and again, I understand Mr. Hamilton's point where we'd like to have something in writing, but sometimes I don't understand the sense of urgency or the emergency that folks think the county are going to all of a sudden explode and allow any, you know, willy-nilly development occur, just because we might make a buck on it, because it behooves us to let that development occur in the cities, especially if it's commercial or regionally commercial development, because we, the only services we would provide would be, you know, are the ones we talked about during our meetings, sheriff, the DA, public defender, things of that nature, which the impact fees would, would help us take care of our facilities on. But I don't, you know, I, I still have a hard time understanding why there's such a sense of, of, of emergency, because it, it just doesn't behoove us to have that happen out in, you know, outside of city limits. And I think we've had that discussion several times, Mr. Vandergrift, in our, in our meetings, as we were talking about our, all of our finances, the counties and as, as well as every one of the cities. And so, again, I see Mr. Pelser pulled the mic over again. I, I really would like to get off this log and give some clear, direct, direction to our staff to, to go hammer these differences, and some of us think they're room-sized differences, some of us think they're pencil-sized differences. But nonetheless, they're differences.
It might be helpful to make clear on that one issue alone, what the position of the board is on regionally significant projects. Supervisor Worthy talked about settings where it might be important. We are talking about within the UABs of cities. That's the only thing we're interested in having, UAB of these cities, not neighboring county cities, to have an understanding that regionally significant projects wouldn't be accepted within the UABs of a city. And that specifically was informed yesterday, would not be agreeable to the county. So that is something that I think is a fundamental difference that-
Well, yeah, I think he addressed that, because of the Rural Valley Lands Plan being in place would not allow, on agriculture properties outside of UDBs would not allow that type of project to occur.
So what harm is it to put it in the general plan? And I think that addresses your second question, which is, why do we think it's so important? It's becoming very important because of the refusal of the county to agree on it. And if it's becoming that important for the county to not agree to that, then it must be within the plans to do it.
Well, I, I don't think, there's, there's no plans to do anything, but I do think one example would be when you look at the community of Goshen and its relationship to Visalia, opportunities might exist to do things within the community of Goshen that would be within the UAB of Visalia. And therein, therein could be a conflict. And I understand that conflict, but I don't agree necessarily that we want to include in this plan an absolute bar that would say that the city of Visalia could say to the community of Goshen, no, you can't do that, it's within our UAB. No. So that's one of the concerns I have, I think that's one of the areas, and it's very, it's very limited in places where things like this could occur, because in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, most of our communities are surrounded by agricultural, actively, you know, growing agricultural properties. And so such projects are, are not even feasible. But there may be, and again, it goes back to historically, what do we have out there? And Goshen's a good example of, of an existing community within a UAB of a larger city, and this could then become a bar to any kind of further development within the community of Goshen. I don't know if that's the intent of Visalia or not, but that would be, could be the consequence. Now, what we have to be worried about are what are the consequences of decisions we'd be making with this general plan, especially when we're looking out over this huge time horizon. And that's, that's a big concern I still have, is, nobody knows what fifty years is. I mean, we know what the timeframe is, but no one knows what a city's boundary looks like in fifty years. It's, it's a very difficult thing to determine.
Steve, I can get clarification, are you worried that the cities would stop it altogether, or that, all we're looking for is it's built to our standards? Are you worried that we would stop it?
Your, your PowerPoint actually says that-
Yes, because that's what you really say. You're saying, what you say is there would be no urban, urbanized development within the UAB. That's what you say.
I don't think that's what we're really talking about.
Now, that, that's exactly what you said.
That's what the language says.
Exactly what you said. Mr. Pelser, is that correct?
That's, that's right. I mean, what we've said is that if it's otherwise not possible, it's already vested, then you build to city standards. And with referrals to the city and understanding how that fits in. But we don't want that to be a replacement to the overall policy that it, urban development is to be avoided in the UAB areas.
And I think generally that, that's, we agree with that. But then you have to look at, you have to, you know, the, the devil's always in the details. Let's look at a, look at, look at a map and say, well, what is that, how does that apply to a community like Goshen? When we take that general rule and put it over the top of that particular location, what happens? And so that's the kind of thing you have to be concerned about, is that what you're saying in communities like I can think of, of Dinuba and probably Lindsay and probably, I don't know about what you and Farmersville, but Visalia, because the fifty-year boundary has them probably overlapping each other, I'm not sure what the situation is there. But in most of the communities, it's really a non-issue. But to take a general rule like that, you have to be careful, because once you apply that, now you have to apply it in every location within the county. And in some cases, it may not be a good fit.
Well, this is where this kind of meeting is helpful, because the general rule that has been described to us by the county is that there's no agreement on the UAB as an area where you're, you're going to have, where you're going to take off the table the regionally significant project. That was expressly, you know, not with, you know, well, we might be agreeable to that, but we've got to figure out how it's to be applied. It was, we're not going to talk about that.
I, I think that goes to the issue of how much do we agree to allow cities to control what occurs in a UAB? Because again, I, I, we have talked-
Exactly right.
I've, I think we've talked about the fact that it makes sense in a UAB to talk about things like transportation corridors, utility corridors, things like that, that are very significant when you're thinking long-term. But, you know, what, what is the life expectancy of a business or a building, you know? So a, a building that's built out there, you know, again, I'm thinking about it, a packing house operation, that's, that's built out there in the UAB that wants to expand. And under the, under the language used here, could not be, could not be expanded, or has to be developed according to the city's standards. Really is not a good application of the rule in that, in that situation. So I, we, we've, we're real concerned, again, it goes back to the property rights, the, the rights of the people who have the property out there. What should they reasonably expect to do in those areas where the city won't, doesn't even know if and when they're ever going to annex that property? It's a, it's a possible annexation way out in time.
I think- The issue is, is that our, our general plans, and in fact, your general plan designates that for agriculture, so I don't really understand what the discussion and debate is here.
I have, I have, I have the operations out in the ag zones that are, that are commercial, commercial and/or industrial developments. And they're ag-related.
And I think what we're saying is, if they have existing development, that's, that's legalized, we're, we're not interested in that issue. I think what we're speaking about is, is new development that would occur on agricultural lands within our UAB. And let me give you just one example. You, you think fifty years is a long time, but, but planning is generational. And when I came on the council, we, we adopted a 1978 general plan, and it had a twenty-year horizon. That got us to 1998. If we had embraced this lack of looking out fifty years, conceivably, from the ninety-eight to the 2008, we could have county development, because it's beyond that twenty-year line. So I think a fifty-year horizon is good, and I think preserving the land and agriculture and potentially future development when the city grows out is admirable. It resolves a lot of problems. And in the case of existing one-acre lots or existing parcels that have an industrial use, I don't think this group is saying, we're going to downzone it. I don't think you've heard that.
Well, no, but I will tell you that your language says no expansion. I mean, that specific language is in there. So if I've got a, a business that needs to expand in order to stay in business, according to the, the language that was given to us, no expansion is allowed.
Okay. I, I, I think those are the details that can be worked out, and we could debate it and discuss it, because I can throw numerous unincorporated communities like the Wells Track, we don't want that to expand because it poses problems for the city of Woodlake. And we've had to connect-
No, 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 Wells Track could not expand. That's, that's, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about industrial uses, or, you know, where, where a guy's got a, a manufacturing plant, he needs to expand his manufacturing plant. He's existing, he's pre-existing, he was built out there before there was any zoning laws in general, so he needs to expand. And that, that person should be, that's, but that's not, we're not talking about residential expansion.
Okay, I, I think those are the kind of details that can be worked out amongst the staff. I mean, I think we're close, but as the chairman said, that the devil is in the details. But I think this would be a good first step to, to get the planning groups together and work out those things that you speak of.
Alex, let me pick on you again, real quick. When, you know, having looked at the county's version of the MOU, is that, is that a, I know this has gone back and forth a few times, and I remember the conversation I had with Mr. Solomon when we received the first one, who said, this is a starting point, you know, this is where we start negotiating. And I, I think we saw your version, and you've seen our version, and I'm, I'm asking you, is there a, a way to marry those two together, and we all walk away happy?
I don't know, I think there's some fairly fundamental issues here in terms of, you know, allowing urban-style development in the UAB as opposed to the UDB. And, you know, we could spin our wheels and send you back another agreement that has that concept in it, but if it's just going to be thrown back as a totally different version again, I don't know how much a stomach our group has for that.
Isn't it easier to put the, all the, I think, I heard Greg mention, isn't it easier to put our planners and our legal staff together in a room and lock the doors and throw food in there once in a while? Until, you know, they come back with something that they can recommend to each of their respective boards or councils?
Possibly. I mean, the last time we did that, we put these issues on the table, and there was looks among the county staff that, I don't know if we have authority to do that. And it turns out, you don't. So, I mean, I, that was two months ago, and so I'm not sure.
Well, it would be, it would be my personal direction to see that, that that was done again, having, having both documents in hand. And I don't know who appropriate staff would be, other than your, yourself and, and our council here to do that. But, you know, again, this supervisor would like to get off the log and see some movement and see an MOU come to fruition.
I, I do have one comment about, if I might, Mr. Chairman. I do have one comment about, if I might, Mr. Chairman, about this issue about, there is this problem of the cart before the horse, Jesus, you brought up, and it works both ways. If the county adopts a plan that the cities think is appropriate and then agrees to agree in the future about some disposition of sharing revenue, well, the county's already played its hand. It hasn't got any more chips to play. And that's one of the difficulties we see is that, you know, I've seen it at LAFCO, if you don't push at the appropriate times, an agreement to discuss something is not, does not mean an agreement will be reached. So, that is, there is that concern. One of the things that we're, we are hoping to do is come up with an agreement on terms of, in terms of percentages of sales tax and transit tax or whatever the case might be simultaneously, not just have an agreement to have, to meet and work together and try to come to an agreement. Because, well, what happens at the end of the day if we don't work together and come to an agreement? We've already committed ourselves to do something, and the city has said, "Well, we'll agree to talk with you about this in the future." That doesn't get us to the end result. So, I mean, the idea of coming to, like an escrow, coming to an agreement where everything is done at one time has been, then we all know where we are.
Well, let's talk a little bit about that because what's come back to us is final best offer's 10-10. That's not acceptable to all the cities. So, we're being dictated to what the revenue sharing's going to be. That's not negotiation. That's not-
A negotiation is putting out a position, and I've not heard any response back to that position until today. If that's not acceptable, it was acceptable in a recent acqui, in a recent development project in one of your cities, but if that's not acceptable, then what is the number?
Well, that's what the MOU's supposed to work on.
Well, but you see my point. We're trying to get a general plan done here. I mean, in a reasonable time. We've been at this now for years. And my big concern is, once the next shoe that's going to drop, not amongst us, but the Attorney General's going to have some other epiphany about what he needs to sue counties on their general plans, and we have to go back to square one again. We need to get a general plan done. And the idea here was to try to get these things worked out, and we feel like we've come a long ways towards reaching a resolution. We're down to some pretty fine details.
We are.
And so, let's get those hammered out and be done with it. But, but just having an MOU that says, "We agree to have a discussion and to try to come to a resolution," is not an agreement that reaches a conclusion. We need a conclusion.
Conclusion as far as percentages? Is that what you're looking for?
Again, that's our, our point of being able to, I found out in this game, you only have certain points where you actually have any, you know, pressure points to reach a conclusion. If you don't, you know, I found out that if we don't object to cities' general plans, they're, they're expanding UDBs, if we don't object at the right time and they want to cherry pick, they can cherry pick real estate, and they do. But it's too late once that, once that's done, it's been done. So, I mean, there are certain points of time when you can reach a resolution, and if you allow that to get by, then we may be in discussions about like this 10 years from now. And by the way, when we're talking about sharing revenue, which doesn't occur until we get past the 20-year SOI or urban development boundary, we're talking about sharing that doesn't occur within our, probably your and my lifetimes. So, I don't know why it's a major topic of discussion because it's out there, a distance. And it's being done by other, in other jurisdictions, the numbers we're talking about. So, but I mean, I think we're trying, we need to reach a resolution. An MOU that just says, "We'll talk about it in the future" is not a resolution.
So, what's your suggestion?
Let's reach a resolution.
The two lawyers, the law. No, I'm talking about a committee to get this thing hammered out. When we started this out, we really wanted the two of you in there with some elected so that the electeds get it hammered out. And that always goes back to staff or the lawyers. Ultimately, it's our decision, your decision.
Okay. Well, he shoved the mic in front of my face.
He wanted you to respond to that.
I'll, I'll tell you what, and Supervisor Worley and I tell you, we do work together very well, sometimes just like oil and water, but the majority of the time, we work together like a well-oiled sprocket. So, I would recommend Supervisor Worley and myself to serve on that committee. And I'm talking about the MOU, I'm not talking about anything else. I'm talking about the MOU, Supervisor Worley and myself and Julia serve as the county's representatives along with either Mr. Raper or Dave down here. So, I don't know, I would offer up those four to serve on the committee. And I just offered you up yourself. Bob and Planner and Legal Counsel. So- Bob's not here, so.
He just volunteered.
Although Mr. Link did tell me that he did have a 4:30 appointment. He told me before we started that he was going to have to leave shortly before 30 to, to make his other appointment.
The Council of Cities has designated myself, Bob Link. Which Planner would we, who wants to volunteer as the Planner designate?
Way to go, Daryl. They're all good.
With the chair, I'll nominate Mike Almost to be part of that.
How's everybody else? Who? Okay. The Council of Cities Representative, Mike Almost, the Planner, Alex Pelzer, Legal Counsel, Vandergriff and Link as the Council of Cities Representatives, as elected.
And do we have a timeframe for the first hammer session? Okay, let's verify the members. Worley, Cox, Roberts, our County Counsel, Jake, who's going to be the lead for RMA?
It'd be myself or Dave.
Can we have Planners, two Planners, one from each side of the county?
That's fine.
We'd like to have, add Brad to that from Porterville because he did success, he's out of all of us, has successfully accomplished a completed general plan.
Correction.
That's the-
Award-winning.
You're never going to let us forget that, are you? So, I have Worley, Cox, Roberts, Jake, Alex, Mike Almost, Brad Dunlap, Vandergriff and Link.
Okay. Counsel? All in favor?
Even though it's not listed as a, as a, for us as an action item, I think we've come to an agreement. We'd like to have this first meeting, if we can, after Tuesday's date. So, if, and I don't know who the most difficult folks to get to the table are going to be or to the room.
Lawyers.
They work, now they work for us.
Now, we have three of them. Gosh.
They work, they work for us. We're going to tell them when to be there.
Yes, you see, I'm on vacation today. I'm here.
Ooh, dedication. Okay. You know what? We need to, I think we need to have a note-taking staff-type person who will email all of us with some dates. Daryl? You're going to volunteer, Roxanne, is what I just heard you do.
He's already got everybody's address, so.
Roxanne, would you please, I would say, you and I'll work together. We'll come up with three days and times and a place. Email that out to everyone and pick the best. Okay. Have we, have we beat this one up enough, folks? I think we've come to a good conclusion, a good place here. Last thing we have on here is elected official matters, which is an item we put on our board agenda each week, just to allow electeds to say anything they want to say. If you've got an event you'd like to promote, if you have something that you'd like to talk about, we're going to start over here with Ted McCauley because he raised his hand.
You betcha. Just like in school.
We're going to go in a counterclock, or we're going to go in a clockwise motion. Anybody wanting to say something, you go ahead and pitch in.
I just want to invite everyone to our Exeter Fall Festival next Saturday and Sunday at City Park. We've got 5K run in the morning, pancake breakfast. We've got, of course, the infamous Exeter Parade at 10 o'clock, and there'll be lots of food and fun down at the City Park.
Great. We're going to, if you want to chime in, we'll go ahead on down the line. Terry, Suzie?
Okay. We have our chili cook-off this weekend, and also we have LPOA dinner on October 10th. So, you're all welcome to come out, and we're recognizing an officer from every city in our county as well as our Sheriff's Department. And so, we're looking forward to recognizing those hardworking officers.
Great. Slot cars.
Mary Gamora.
Suzie.
I talked, I talked about my issue earlier.
Oh, that's yours. Kamla.
All right. I'll just add to Suzie's, our slot cars are being opened up tomorrow afternoon, 4 o'clock. Come out and try your hand.
If I was Worley.
Nothing.
October 17th, Moonee Grove Centennial Celebrations, a Saturday, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Free admission to the park. November 5th, there will be a VIP reception. You are all invited to each of the city council members and their senior staff, November 5th, at the museum in Moonee's Grove, the brand-new museum in Moonee's Grove, will be from 5:30 to 8.
This Saturday is Farmersville's Fall Festival. It starts at 10 o'clock and is about 4, and a lot of food booths, other activities. And if you're interested in used power tools, there's Farmersville Hawk Shop. Get there at 9 o'clock.
No, you better get there at 7:30. Delano.
Let's see, Woodlake. We got a homecoming football team and a parade.
Great, this Friday?
This Friday, tomorrow.
Great. Cam or Felipe?
Yes, this weekend, Porterville's going to have its Relay for Life. It's one of our greater events. Goes from the Saturday morning at 8 o'clock till 9 o'clock Sunday morning. So, it's throughout the evening. Also invite everybody out to the Veterans' Day, and those next month, Veterans' Day Parade, the largest one in the South Valley. Invite everyone out there. And this will be the third year for the fabulous music jam, the organization that erected a clock in the honor of Buck Shaffer. And this time around, we're going to do some unveiling and some awesome benches are going to be also part of the park out there. So, we're creating an atmosphere that it's family-oriented and everyone's invited. Thank you.
Bill?
Probably just as well because there's a lot of things to go see around this county.
That's right.
Great. I do have one written comment that we received for our public comment period that will be entered into the record. Seeing nothing else, we will adjourn. Thank you very much for your attendance. I think we accomplished a great amount today.
Have a safe trip back home.